Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 on Tuesday, June 4th. I'd like to call this Board of Education meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
It's back.
Here.
Here.
I have taken this to finalize the agenda. Are there any items to add or remove or adjust? That takes us to Superintendent Travers' report.
Thank you.
What are we going to give us? We're brought in from zero. Wow. We've been here, I mean, it's down here like it's June. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much, Madam President. We actually have a pretty exciting report tonight, and we are going to kick that off with some of our students and our teacher from the high school who participated in a trip over spring break. It was a service trip to the Dominican Republic that we so generously afforded them the opportunity, and they would like to share a little bit with you about their experiences that they learned on that trip. Also, I would introduce Mr. Brandon Muck and Ms. Travers.
Thank you. So, like she said, on spring break this year, I took 25 students to the Dominican Republic on a service trip, and so I brought three of them with me, and they're going to tell you a little bit about the trip.
I'm Bailey, I'm a junior going into my senior year.
I'm Julia, I'm also a junior going into my senior year.
I'm Eddie, I'm also a junior going into my senior year.
So, we just went to the Dominican Republic on the spring break, so it was the day that we got out of school, to the day before we were supposed to go back, basically. On our first day, we got to meet this group from New York. It was a little, about the same size as our group, and this was us the day that we were leaving, our rush driver. We got really close with this group, it was really, really sad to leave. We actually planned on going to their graduation parties this summer, driving to Long Island, a big group of us, and going to their graduations. They planned up, so they were all in a row for us.
I think this was our first day when we got there, our first night, we were heading to dinner, it was like 15 minutes away, we took about six to get there, it was a super, super nice place. The food was really good, you had an option between like, um, pasta, so we had a really, really good time.
We went sightseeing in San Francisco. This was, there was so much to look at, and this was when we actually got to start bonding as a group that met. So, it was super incredible to like, learn their stories and start hearing where they, like, what grade they were in, what they liked. This was just when we were first starting to get to know them. So, seeing everything was so awesome, the culture, and like, just everything that was so different in San Francisco than it was here.
It was really hot. It was freezing. Um, this is our third day, it was the first time that we got along here with most of the boys from it. It was so amazing, like, I can't even explain, like, the connections that we made with these kids. The language barrier was so interesting, but we all got along so well. We thought it was going to be awkward, but we played all day, like, it was so heartwarming.
And, uh, both that, when is the girls' organization straight after the boys' organization? And in this one, we bonded a lot more with the girls more than we did with the guys, and it was, a lot of us had gotten very closer.
This is the first time I've ever seen Eddie cry.
Yeah, there were a lot of tears.
Yeah, it was...
Right when you got there, like, they just clung to you, they kicked you out, and they like, just wanted all your love and affection the entire time, and it was so sad leaving, and...
Tell us about the little picture, what's in the picture there?
So, we all got to bring stuff to them if we wanted to, they said that they would take anything that they could get. So, I personally, I think I brought 80 pairs of shoes, 40 for boys, 40 for girls, and when they saw, like, how much shoes you were bringing, and you could just tell that they needed them, it was just so heartwarming because they, you knew that they needed them, and you knew that everything was going to a related cause. And then our fifth day, we visited the national park. We all were a little dead in the morning, to be honest, because we were so exhausted from the, like, past two days, but it was super fun, we got to jump in these little, like, what are they, like, springs? They were super, super cool.
And then the sixth day was our free day on the beach or on the island, and after, like, a long, five days of work and everything, sightseeing and everything, we went to the, we visited this island, we went snorkeling, then we enjoyed ourselves, every, like, four hours at the beach.
They said we went ziplining, this was awesome. It was like, I think, a total of 14 ziplines, took you to all different places, and this was also a time that you got to see who was afraid of heights, and really get to know people, because you were in line, you had to wait in line quite a while, but it was still so awesome.
This is my part, so I'm going to tell you guys about our next trips that we're planning, and, um, they played a big part in it. I actually had some meetings with students and had them pick where they wanted to go. Um, so this is kind of the end result of meeting together with some of the leadership team, and, um, so the big difference, we've done two trips, we did Ecuador, then we did the Dominican Republic, and the big difference between the two, if you can tell, is the number of students that are interested in going. Um, so for that reason, we're going to actually plan two trips to kind of keep the groups small. Um, I'm not going to take more than 20 to 25 kids on these trips, because otherwise it just, it's not as, the communities we're going to help really can't support large groups. So, we're going to do Costa Rica in summer 2020, and Thailand in spring break of 2021. So, the reasons for doing, um, these trips every year is obviously increased student interest, repeat student travelers, um, they've been on both trips with me, Ecuador and the Dominican Republic. Um, we're actually partnering with the Rotary Club, and we're, I'm starting the Rotary Interact Club next year, and they're going to have student scholarships, they're going to give students travel scholarships to go on these trips. Um, so that was kind of one, it fits perfectly with the Rotary Club's mission statement for how they have, um, service targeting international life and interactive service projects and discussions. And there's also a new service learning course offered at the high school, so we're even going to have even more students interested in these types of trips. Um, so a little bit about, um, myself, just some experience I have as a teacher, advisor, coach, I've traveled many places, and I've led two of these student service trips, so I feel pretty confident that, um, we can do this on a yearly basis. Um, it gives lots of growth opportunities for students, as you can tell, um, they, I've seen them grow and mature throughout these trips, they expand their worldview, they personally grow, and they become more marketable to colleges and scholarships. Um, so a little bit about the two trips, I'll go through this pretty quick, um, we'll have time for questions at the end, but, um, some of the highlights, I've actually been to Costa Rica, so I've seen all these places, they're beautiful. Um, I highlighted all the service things in yellow, but it's not all service, so there's some sightseeing and adventurous activities they get to do, but it's 30 to 40 hours of community service on this trip. Um, there's going to be service by the Arinella volcano, which used to be the world's most active volcano, it's not anymore, um, but it used to be, it's, 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 uh, pretty beautiful. They're going to teach English class to students that don't know English, and, um, they're going to volunteer at a conservation center, probably planting trees or picking up the environment. And, um, then San Jose is the capital, where they're actually going to work with a homeless organization, that they help the homeless, and they're going to serve the needs that are there. Um, so it's a 15-day trip, that's why we're having one in the summer. And then the next one is Thailand, um, so some of the highlights from Thailand, uh, their service is going to be at Elephant Sanctuary, and it's not big African elephants, it's little Asian elephants, but still really interesting. Um, and they're also going to spend the night at the Buddhist monastery, so they're going to learn a little bit about, um, that, that culture and that religion. Um, so of course, costs, I tried to break it down and simplify it as best as I can for everybody. So, Costa Rica is a 15-day trip in June, about $2,800 per student, that is a steal for a 15-day trip. Uh, when I was, when I heard that price, um, it was, uh, an easy, easy sell for me. Um, so roughly 12 monthly payments of $230, and students that have traveled with me to the Dominican get a $100 discount, so you can take $100 off that price with a 1 to 6 student, um, to chaperone ratio. And, uh, Thailand is a 10-day trip, it's $3,400, which is why we wanted to do that two years down the road, it gives them more time to raise money. So, that would be 24 monthly payments of around $140, $100 discount for the travelers. Um, like I said, I'm looking to take 20 to 25 students per trip. Students actually have to fill out an application to go, um, because I want students that are not just looking for vacation, students that are looking to serve, so I think that'll help, um, with that. So, a little bit about the company, I've already presented this to you guys before, so, um, ExploreCo is the company that we're going to be, going to be using. I was really happy with our Dominican trip and all the services that they gave us. Um, here's their safety plan, um, necessarily, I think I've already spoken on this before, um, but they're all about safety, and then, um, questions, Megan could maybe, I was hoping Megan would say something.
Can you go back to the two, um, note to the, about the company?
Yes.
There's one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
You have another question?
So, it sounds like you guys had a lot of fun.
Sounds like that's our experience.
All excited about the food, and then they told me you had pizza, ask them.
Let's give them one, yenny pick, and, uh, or to pizza, we're fine with that.
And one of the resorts we were at was all-inclusive as well, so they could eat as much as they wanted, buffet style.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pizza was major concern.
Ready to take, can you go to the next one?
Yeah.
So, all three of you, those two years in a row now?
Uh, me and Bailey did Ecuador, he did the last one.
How's it changing?
I actually am planning on going in a world race because of this, it's a nine-month trip, all missionary work, so this is something that has really pushed me to do that, so I won't obviously think back the year between high school and college to go do that, and it's because of this, if I wouldn't have done this, I definitely would have been motivated to go do that, so.
Same with me, I'm thinking, one of my options is to go into the Peace Corps, so I think that would be completely awesome. And also, it just changes, like, your way of thinking, you see these kids, and how lucky you are to have everything that you have, and how excited they are just to see you and to have love, and that's just, like, overwhelming and just amazing, so, I loved it.
And for me, I'm donating, I've talked to, talked about it with my family, me and all my brothers and sisters, donating, helping those who, like, outgrown, donating to charities and stuff. Makes me definitely appreciate everything I have, for sure.
Well, I think that was a successful trip, and we are so proud of both Mr. Muck and our students, and for the opportunities that they are able to experience here in North Ridgeville, so have a nice night.
Thank you.
I'm so hurt. Our next report is actually a long-time coming report. Uh, the facilities planning committee has been meeting for roughly 18 months. I am actually going to turn this over to Mr. Matt Younger, who really was spearheading this entire, uh, planning process, all the way, and it probably went back, so he's going to hold a presentation, and introduce you members of that group.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Casero said, my name is Matt Younger, I'm the Director of Operations for the district. Um, we are here tonight to present not only the findings, but provide also the ultimate recommendation from the Facility Planning Committee, uh, to the North Ridgeville Board of Education, as it relates to the future of our facilities and what that looks like for the future of our school district. Um, here are some items that we're going to briefly touch on for this presentation tonight, and without further ado, I'm going to bring up Greg Plantner, who is the Principal of the North Ridgeville Academic Center in Elementary Building, to talk through the history of the committee, who was involved in it, um, and where we got, how we got to the point that we're at right now.
Good evening, Board members and everybody else in attendance. As Matt said, I'm Greg Plantner, I'm one of the members of the Facilities Planning Advisory Committee that has been working for the last 18 months here in the district to really review the state of our facilities and to really create a vision for what we think is best for our students moving forward. Um, I want to start by really just thanking the committee for even creating the committee, or thanking the board for allowing the committee to really work through this process and make this recommendation. I think the committee spent a lot of time, a lot of effort taking this very seriously and really has some great plans moving forward that we'd like to recommend. Uh, these are the members of the committee, uh, made up of North Ridgeville City Schools, employees and members, members from the city, members of the community, and a number of them are here this evening, so if you are on the committee, can you just stand for a minute so we can recognize those people who are part of our committee? So, that's a small, uh, number of the people who are part of the committee, and I really wanted to reflect and kind of a summary of the timeline. So, we started all the way back in January of 2018, was the first time that we met as a committee, and started really working on a vision for where we wanted to go, and started reviewing a whole lot of data that was, uh, presented to us through TDA, the partner that we worked with during this process. Um, in November, TDA presented to the Board of Education, and then back in December, the district entered the health program, which I believe is the expedited local partnership program, uh, with the state of Ohio, which allows us to really move forward with the process as well. So then, after reviewing a lot more data, uh, the committee then was able to move in May to reviewing and finalizing three master plan options, the district received their final bonding capacity, and the Facilities Planning Committee was able to take that information and really revise that master plan to respond to what's realistic for the district. So, to kind of flesh that out a little bit better, um, we started by really looking at some guiding principles for why this committee existed in the first place and where we wanted to move forward, looking at how to promote safety, how to promote collaboration and community partnership in the buildings, how to promote growth, and how to really be flexible in our buildings moving forward so we can provide the best learning environment possible for our students. Uh, we reviewed the TDA assessment and validations of the schools and transportation, so really what that means is that we looked at what we have currently. We looked at the state of our facilities, we looked at whether or not those facilities are viable into the future for our students, and looked at not only the learning environment for what's best for their education, but also the financial and realistic, uh, you know, ability to use those buildings for the foreseeable future. So, we looked at, as I mentioned, the educational inadequacy, the capacity, the space, the functionality, uh, and where those buildings work for our students and where those buildings currently don't work so well for our students. Uh, we reviewed enrollment projections, um, Future Think on behalf of the OFCC and Decision Insight both did projection, um, data for us that we were able to review, and looked at really where the district's going, I think everyone in this room is aware of the fact that our district's growing faster than almost any district in the state of Ohio, and that has a significant impact on what we're able to do currently in our buildings and where we need to go for the future. So, um, through staff surveys, through site surveys, through developing that master plan options, the committee really worked over the course of 12 different times when we got together, reviewed all that data, talked about our vision for the district, and determined sort of really what we wanted to make possible for our students. And the bottom line is that we have a high school, and we have elementary schools right now that are out of date, that we have capacity issues with, and that really aren't what we, is best for our students, and so we now have the opportunity to present this evening where we think the district should go and what we would recommend for our facilities for the future. So, I'm going to turn this over to Abby from TDA, and she is going to give you a lot more information about that.
Thank you. Good to see you guys again. Um, so, as, as Gar mentioned, you know, this is kind of the summary of all the, all the data that was collected and analyzed to kind of get to the framework, start looking through master plan options. So, the options I'm going to show real quick, these have a little bit of the timestamp on there, from May 1st. So, um, when, when the committee started fleshing out these master plan options, there were some, there were some trends that were consistent, I'm going to show you three of them. So, the first master plan option that the committee reviewed was to, came up with, was to construct a 1912 facility. We put some pricing to each of these, that pricing, that usually is, um, updated for the new OFCC cost set, so that's, you know, current, current pricing. Um, build a new K4 facility at Liberty. Build a new transportation and maintenance facility. Um, right now, we're not talking about any new bond issue funds to do that, there are some other funding mechanisms that, um, we've been working with, um, the treasurer on, so that would not be part of this conversation, but we did identify that's a very big need and priority in the district right now. This facility would become a 5 through 8 facility in this scenario, and the early childhood learning facility would become pre-K only. Um, since those facilities are newer, brand new here, and then partially new and partially renovated in DCLC, there's no cost associated with that one either. And then, um, we figured in the abatement and demolition of the buildings that would come offline as part of this. Um, something else we added into all these options that you'll see underlined is a 10% escalation for market conditions. Um, so what we're doing is we're analyzing the bidding environment right now, what's happening with construction in this region in particular, um, it's rather volatile, um, we're seeing the costs go up and up and up. So, even though the OFCC is recommending about a 4% increase in costs, um, we are recommending, and the committee kind of decided on an additional 10%. So, you know, there's, there's time involved in passing the bond issue, in designing the building, and construction, so we wanted to make sure to account something for those conditions. So, I guess the whole project cost, you see here, about $147,000 for this option. The next option, again, these are still from, this is still from May 1st, um, it's kind of a spin on the last option, so construct a new 1912 facility, renovate the 1994 portion or the new portion of the high school, um, for community use, high-tech academy, early college, there were a lot of options thrown out, so that would be an additional $6 million. Uh, build a new K4 at Liberty, build a new maintenance transportation, uh, again, this facility would be 5 through 8, and the early childhood building would be pre-K, and then the abatement and demolition, and again, that market escalation, so this one was $154 million. And then the last, um, option, again, you'll see, you'll see the themes that stuck through all the initial master plan options, constructing a 1912 facility, this one was build a new K3 at Liberty, the other, the other two were K4. Um, I think in a little bit, Matt's going to talk about enrollment projections and why we felt comfortable going to a K3 solution at the committee, um, but this looked a new K3 at about $46.3 million. Again, the rest of the plan remains very similar, except for this facility will come with $43.7 million. That whole project cost was around $134.7 million. So, those were the initial master plan options. So, what we did was, we ranked those, we did a broadened con list, we really tried to let out those top three options that the committee came up with, and then shortly after that, we got some final information about what the district's bonding capacity was. Um, so the district's bond control, the administrative team, um, you know, obviously led by, uh, Mr. Verlengo, um, worked to develop what our, what our bonding cap was, so it was $132.9 million, that's all that were available to go up to the community for. That's based upon the assessed value of the community currently, with some growth taken into account. And, um, all the master plan options that I reviewed from May 1st were over that bonding capacity. So, we had to get back with the committee a few more times to start to get creative. We identified our priorities, we know what we want to try to do, and now we had to do what a lot of folks have to do, we had to figure out how to work within our budget. Um, the good thing is, I think we came up with a plan to address all the needs, um, and we're going to get into that a little bit later with Cheryl, but, um, next is going to be a little bit of a talk about those enrollment numbers that I mentioned a minute ago, so.
Thanks, Abby. So, in the previous three plans that Abby had mentioned, um, when we were sitting together as a group, we had based those plans on, on 6,000 students in the district, and to provide a little bit of context, we're at roughly 4,600 students in the district currently. Um, as we were sitting through and talking through those plans, we, we planned for 6,000 students. Greg had mentioned that we had an OFCC projection, uh, enrollment projection done, and then we had went out and worked with an independent study as well. The OFCC came back and said in 10 years, they predict the school district to be at 5,100 students, so we'll have 500 student growth over the course of the next 10 years. Our independent enrollment projection group, Decision Insight, um, we've got them in mind for another three years, and the reason being that there's a lot of development going on in the city, and you can see, even if not, um, in detail, all these different colors on this map here represents all the growth that's still going on in the city of North Ridgeville. Um, so Decision Insight went ahead and took a look, and what they could confidently tell us was, at least over the course of the next two to three years, they see a sustained growth of 3% to 4% a year. Um, we also have been meeting with city officials regularly, and what we've got from them, based on, on feedback that they know from buildable lots and developable, developable land in the city, is that they, they project that we could be over 6,000 students based on what they see, um, as it relates to growth in the city, um, for building developments. Abby mentioned, we did get our bonding capacity, so we know we're at $132.9 million bonding capacity. We saw the previous master plan, that at 6,000 students, we were over that threshold of a bonding capacity, so we had to come back, like Abby said, to get creative with what we were going to do, to try and fit within that budget. And where we landed, what you can see here, we mapped out over the next 10 years, a 3% growth for three years, 1.5% growth for four years, and then the 1% growth, um, that's supposed to be for three more years, yielding roughly 5,500 students total for 10 years. So, that falls right where we felt was in a reasonable range, that was between that 6,000 number that we're working with, between the 5,100 student number that the OFCC gave us, and really allowed us to move forward with coming up with a master plan that, that fell within the budget that we could, um, present to the Board of Education. And so, with that tonight, what we'd like to present to the board, um, keeping in mind, taxpayer considerations in terms of being mindful of what, what they have, being mindful to, to our community as it relates to a growing district, and one thing we did not want to do was provide a recommendation that would build too small, and on the flip side, provide a recommendation that would have empty buildings. Um, we feel very confident, we feel very excited that we're here tonight to present this final plan that is the culmination of 18 months, like we've talked about, from the Facilities Planning Committee, that the early childhood learning community would become a pre-K facility, so that stays in line with what the original three plans were that we talked about, constructing a new K through 3 facility, and integrating Ranger High Tech Academy. Um, we don't know what that looks like as it relates to, um, space or how that fits in the building, what we are confident in, and what we will have a commitment to, is maintaining that STEM designation throughout the district, and integrating, um, integrate levels of the buildings that we construct. So, as I mentioned, constructing a new K3 facility, integrating Ranger High Tech creates 2 and 3 into that building. North Ridgeville Academic Center, our current building becomes a 4 through 8 facility, integrating Ranger High Tech Academy creates 4 to 8 in this building. Constructing a new high school, 1912 building, with a performing arts center, and integrating Ranger High Tech Academy into that building. And then, constructing a new maintenance and transportation facility, using some of those alternative funding mechanisms that Abby mentioned, so that would not fall in the $132.9 million bonding capacity. And then, abating and demolishing the high school, Ranger High Tech Academy, Liberty, and the current maintenance and transportation garages. Um, what we're excited about, and Cheryl's going to come up and talk through that here shortly, is that this was a creative and unique way that we could meet the needs of the district, uh, while being fiscally responsible and falling within that framework of the bonding capacity that we have, and Cheryl's going to talk through how we can do that right now, um, on this next slide, and again, a very exciting time, where we can still present the options that the committee felt were needed for the district within that threshold.
So, yeah, that was the, the big challenges. We, we believe, as we started off with the initial master plan options that Abby described, at 6,000 students, that that's where we think we're going to fall, but now knowing our bonding capacity of 132.9, how do we make this plan work but still plan in the future appropriately for... plan in the future appropriately for where we think the enrollment is going to fall? So the committee we convened, and we really worked hard at looking at how we can accomplish this, and the beauty of this is that because we're in the ELP program, the Expediting Local Partnership Program, which means we can plan for whatever enrollment projections that we feel are correct, and in, and in the future, we will get a credit, we can see 100% of the costs upfront. But when our term comes up in the main program, which is CFAP, Classroom Facilities Assessment Program, we get 24% credit for whatever we put on the bond issue now for phase one. So what I'm going to talk about is phase one, and then we're going to talk about how we can address the future growth to 6,000 students in phase two. So phase one is what we're talking about right now, and it assumes 5,500 students district wide, and really, this is the very same master plan that Abby just outlined as master plan option three. So I'll just go through it again. The early childhood learning center becomes a PK facility only. Right now, it's PK K, there's no cost to that project, to, you know, to reducing it to just PK only. We would construct a new K three facility based on about 423 students per grade level. Again, right now, we're looking at the Liberty site. That is about a $47 million price tag. This facility would become a four through eight facility. It would allow us to provide, to implement Ranger High Tech Academy within the facility and still have growth for future growth, no cost impact to that. Construct the new nine through 12 facility, as well as incorporating Ranger Tech High Academy facility students that are at that building now into the new nine through 12 facility. New transportation and maintenance facility again, no cost impact, as Abby and Matt described, it would be through cost funding or some other sources, so no dollar impact to this bond issue. And then abate the buildings that are, abate the demolition buildings that are going offline, which include the high school, Ranger High Tech Academy, Liberty, and the transportation and maintenance facilities. So our total project cost, as you see here, is $132.4 million based on 5,500 student enrollment district wide, which is below our bonding capacity of 132.9. Any questions? Matt, how do we accomplish our goal of building for what we think is a 6,000 student district wide student enrollment? Well, again, OSFC, as Matt outlined, enrollment projections are slightly less than what we are anticipating. So the upper half of the screen above this blue line represents what the co-funded project is under OFCC guidelines, based on their enrollment projections of what, what 5,100? So we have a project cost, instead of $132 million, of $96 million, and our 24% ELP credit, which we anticipate getting as of today via the information from OFCC, in the next five, six years, a dollar amount of $23.1 million. So what does that mean? Well, that means that gives us $23.1 million to build for more growth, if it's actually occurring to that 6,000 student district wide enrollment, as well as a performing arts center that could seat 1,000 seating capacity, which has been a very, a very dominant issue in all of our discussions, that this district needs a performing arts center, and we're a torn complex for drama, performing arts, and that's a price tag associated with it. If our buildings grow to the 6,000 student capacity, we have the ability, within this $23 million amount, to, in addition to this PAC center, create, in addition to the K three building, as well as the nine and 12 building that we're closing to build this new. So right now, we're already planning and thinking about how these future additions could come to play, as far as in terms of design and site layout, so that's already in, in play. And if it doesn't happen, it's okay. You're not going to overpay as taxpayers, because if it doesn't happen, that growth that we see at this time, in five, six years, whatever, you know, whenever our number comes up, you have that number in the bond issue, you use that, use those extra dollars to pay down the bonding, the bonding debt. So the taxpayers essentially do not pay for it.
The 24% in this scenario is based on the $5,100 student population?
So the 24% is based on your equity rate actually?
No, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant the dollar amount is the 24, the 23 million is based on?
Yes, OSFC's projections of 5,100 students. So, so let's, let's play a couple scenarios. Let's say this, let's say the student enrollment goes up, let's say it goes to 6,000. OSFC will now co-fund for those extra students. On the flip side, if it goes down, they're going to deduct your ELP credit, let's say it's only 4,800, so they're going to deduct your ELP credit based on 4,800 students. So it could go either way. The 24%, however, is locked in when you sign your ELP agreement and enter into a construction project. Now, that will not change for this project or future projects. That was complex stuff. Any other questions?
So that leaves us with really several next steps. We have submitted the ELP information to the OFCC, Columbus has confirmed that they received that information. Once they get that back to us, we will have to have a resolution from the board and submit that back to the OFCC by June 14th, so we will keep more updated as we get that information from Columbus. But thank you very much for the opportunity, as Greg said, for the committee to take on this endeavor and work through the past year and a half on what has really been an exciting project and an exciting time for the district.
That brings us to clearing of public on agenda items. If anyone would like to speak about an item that is on the agenda this evening, now is your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, that takes us to our contents agenda. Mrs. Tamira, our education committee report?
We have five agreements on the school calendar, the concept of implementation. First is an agreement with University Hospital to receive services, athletic trainer to support our student athletes, for the 2019, 2020 school year. The second is an agreement with Brittle Studios for photographic services for pre-K through 12th grade, and is a three-year agreement. The next agreement is a renewal between positive teaching program, PEP program, and MRCS. PEP provides educational services for students who require specialized instruction, and the services at their various locations. Also, we have an agreement with ESC Project Search. It is a program that provides work-based instruction for our students with disabilities at two locations, Mercy Hospital in Lorraine and LCC C Menkins. Finally, we have an agreement with Support for Families, which goes into homes to support the families of students with intense needs. They help families create behavior plans for students, which helps in preparation of occupational skills in order for job place as graduate, graduated adults. They also have our 2020, 2021 school calendar considered for approval. This calendar is consistent with 2019, 2020 school year, and provides our students with the greatest number of quality school days for educational purposes. And that concludes the education report.
Thank you, Mrs. Tamira. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the education report?
I have a question about what?
Yes, Mrs., yes, go ahead.
In the past, I've found that the CO has created some concern among the community members regarding the cost of their services. There have been various differences between districts, or within the different schools that we have, cost, and I don't see that expressed in this project.
Is there, for the administration, is there potential to look and request RFQs or AR, what are they called?
Any other questions or comments about the education report? Takes us to our policy report. This is the first reading of the new set of policies posted by NEOLA that we are transferring to. The policy committee has reviewed and made edits to the following policy books. We see the 5,000, this deals with students, 6,000 is finances, 7,000 is property, 8,000 is operation, and 9,000 is donations. This is the second set of policies that the board will have reviewed prior to full adoption on July 1st. Anyone has any questions about policies, please refer those to our policy committee, which would be Mrs. Saxon and I. That takes us to our community issues report. Mrs. Yeti?
We have four gifts to North Ridgeville City Schools. Total donations received for the 2018, 2019 school year total, $15,320.10. First is a $200 donation by an anonymous family to the Ranger High Tech Academy to be used for a learner to attend a community emergency field trip. Second, we have the White Plains Tree Seedlings, estimated value of $150. That was donated by Jason Radaboll to the early childhood learning community to be used for the students' science project. Next is math initiative, and most of the latest breaking items, which has a value of $50, was donated by Marshall Frank to the Ranger High Tech, to be used as needed. And finally, we have a monetary donation of $4,795 to be donated by a lucky basket of a North Ridgeville, a North Ridgeville academic center. We give our community generous mental support of our schools and our students.
Thank you.
And ask any names and addresses for your donations.
Okay, any questions or comments about that? That takes us to our buildings and operations report. Mr. Bacca?
There are several items to consider under the buildings and operations report. First, there are four items that appear for reassignment, including an active panel, copying machine, fencing, and a front lawn. There's a changeover in the amount of $6,423.60 for reconciliation with the allowance for the building monument sign at the North Ridgeville Academic Center. It is also recommended that the district approve the bids from Rush Bus Center for the purchase of five 77 Bassinger school buses, a total cost of $462,220. Finally, it is recommended that the board approve the 2019, 2020 district insurance policy for the Ohio School Plan. Total premium is $131,791 for liability, violence, automotive, cyber, and property coverage. This concludes the building and operations report.
Are there any questions about buildings and operations?
I just wanted to ask that we, with, can you just remind us again, we have, for the purchasing of the buses, we have a schedule and a timeline to make sure everybody to know that we have that planned, that it's been included?
In our fiber. It's five buses?
Four to five per year, depends on alternate, four to one year, five to next. And if the goal was to reduce the age of fleet, to make it more safe, and as I've highlighted, capacity is, we continue to have more students.
Thank you. Mr. Yerba, can you tell us more about the monument sign at, at this building and the progress on that?
Sure, yeah, so they've started, the foundation work has begun. If you drive through on Bainbridge, probably see a little mound of dirt out there where that sign's going to go, right at the, the new main entrance off of Bainbridge. What we're waiting on now is the actual sign itself. We're being told that that's going to be in early July, and at which point, CT Taylor and Icon will finish construction of that sign. It'll be a digital sign that we'll have access to, and it'll be up and running by the start of the next year for us.
Thank you.
New municipal buses, those are also the ultimate of the cameras, for the individuals that choose to bypass.
That's sort of the stop on camera, all the included, that's, that's actually included in the price of the buses.
That takes us to our human resources report, Mrs. Saxon?
There are a total of 88 actions regarding human resources. One certified staff, one certified staff leave replacement, one non-represented support staff appointment, two hourly home instructors, 14 interior school bus washing, 15 ESY bus drivers and bus gates, two support staff substitutes for 2018, 2019, 44 support staff substitutes for 2019, 2020, two job classification changes, two certified staff leaves of absence, one support staff leave of absence, one administrative team expectations and benefits package for 2019, 2020, one supervisor team expectations benefits package for 2019, 2020, one non-represented support staff team expectations benefit package for 2019, 2020. These items are receiving a first reading tonight. This concludes the human resources report.
Any questions or comments about human resources?
There is one correction, the president, the committee, those, those benefit books would go to 2022, that's in the year.
Okay.
You see the same thing on page 14, they're listed in the heading as 1922, but then they direct back to 1912.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the contract adjustments. What do those changes need?
Those are two current employees that are moving from one classification area to another, which requires an adjustment for the contract.
And are the job descriptions located in the packages?
They are, yeah.
Any other questions? Takes us to our finance and audit report. In order to maintain funding for the North Ridgeville City Schools, this board has elected to place a substitute levy on the November ballot for consideration by our voters. The substitute levy replaces the four emergency levies, which are in effect right now, and those begin to expire in 2019. Passage of this levy will not increase taxes for our residents. I motion to approve the resolution to submit necessary substitute tax levy on this second reading. Moved by myself, seconded by Mrs. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Call call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mrs. Yeti?
Yes.
Mr. Mura?
Yes.
Mr. Baca?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. As for agreement with the Ohio Schools Facility Commission, the district is required to provide funds for ongoing maintenance of our buildings that are constructed. This transfer moves dollars from the permanent improvement fund to the classroom facilities maintenance fund, in compliance with that requirement. This is the first reading of the transfer funds, and it will be up for approval on the June 18th meeting. That takes us to other board business. Mrs. Saxon?
We have some employment recommendations under other board business to be approved. Five certified staff appointments, four special project segments, one extended service instructional staff for 2018, 2019, one extended service instructional staff for 2019, 2020, three support staff presentations.
Can I get a motion, please? Moved by Mr. Bacca, seconded by Mrs. Tamira. Is there any discussion? Call call, please.
Mr. Baca? Yes. Mrs. Mura? Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
It takes us to hearing of public on new items. If anyone would like to speak about an item that was not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to do so.
Next question.
Sure, you just have to come up to the podium. Sure, can you step up to the podium, please? Let me just make your name and your add-ins.
My name is Paul Lance, here at 64 U. Oak Street.
Thank you.
So just a general question. I know you're budgeting for all the buildings. How many students per teacher is appropriate? And how are you budgeting for the human resources and the teachers?
Thank you.
Ms. Tamira, you want to lead the question? As late school buses in our five-year forecast, we have projected out our student growth and how to plan for the human resources and staffing that would go along with our classroom needs. In addition, we always are monitoring our enrollment and making adjustments if our class sizes are getting too large or making adjustments the other way. We do have a bubble here where classes are smaller. So that's constantly happening throughout the summer and into the beginning of the school year.
Thank you.
Just to follow up.
Please.
So how many students? How many students is appropriate per teacher, do you feel? Like, what is the range?
Thank you.
We don't have a set number. You know, generally, when you're looking at early childhood, we try to keep our classes small and reasonable. Again, we're talking about reading instruction and early literacy that is critical to the remainder of their educational career. Students maturely and get a little bit older, our class sizes do become a little bit larger. But we definitely try to keep those numbers manageable for both our students and our staff in order for them to maintain balance in their classrooms.
So that being to an exact number, let's say a range. Would the range be like 20 to 25, is that appropriate? When do you get where you say, what do you should give on teachers?
Generally, 30 makes me nervous.
Ms. Britt, do we have something in negotiated agreement that we don't know?
So the negotiated agreement addresses that in a couple of different places. And you're right to overlook A, if you exceed specific numbers. And that varies based on whether you're an elementary classroom or you're a middle school or high school classroom based on the numbers you're choosing for the course of the day. So there is some language in the negotiated agreement itself. In most cases, it's not hard to act, it works itself into, you know, compensations. But again, with Ms. Tamira's thought on it, really just depends on the great all of the A students. I think some having adjustments this year, we worked to, in this last year, in terms of office. But also, that's a great office where we're probably a little high when we're able to bump a section down, which is really a big responsibility.
Thank you. Anyone else for hearing of public, anyone else? Seeing none. We do not have an executive session tonight, so it is recommended the Board of Education adjourn this special meeting with no action to adopt. Moved by Mrs. Tamira, seconded by Mrs. Saxon. Anything special? Call call, please.